It is 7:15 and we apologize to the public for the late start time.
Good evening, my fellow commissioners, staff and the public. I'm Dan Maeda, I'm co-chair of the commission. Our apologies for the late start. We had a technical glitch in terms of getting on and the other co-chair, Commissioner Williams, I believe, is having that same problem and she should be hopefully joining us shortly. I'd like to call this regular meeting to order and perhaps we could start with the roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fourth County of Los Angeles Citizen Redistricting Commission Regular Public Meeting for 2021. Today is February 10th, 2021, and the time is 7:16 PM. I will now take the role. Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Jean Franklin?
Here.
Commissioner David Holtzman?
Here.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza?
Present.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon?
Here.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura?
Here.
Commissioner Haley Soto? Commissioner Haley Soto?
He was here earlier, so...
I still...
I see his hand go up.
So Commissioner Haley Soto, I believe your mic is not working.
Here, is it working?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Sider Soto?
Present.
Commissioner Priya Shidaran?
Here.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher?
Here.
Commissioner John Vento?
Excuse.
Co-chair Carolyn Williams?
Also excused.
Commissioner Dorina Wong?
Here.
Thank you.
Excuse me, co-chair Maeda, there's some information we need to announce to the public in general about the meeting being recorded. Do you want to read through that information? Would you like me to do that for you?
Can you do it?
I just want to be sure the public knows the meeting is being recorded and will be posted at the website of redistricting.lacounty.gov. It is available on YouTube at LA County Redistricting as well. If during the meeting you require technical assistance, use your Q and A button at the bottom of your Zoom webinar screen and Ty Lee of KH is there to help you. Other public submissions can be submitted to the CRC through COMMсерV, comserve@bos.lacounty.gov. I turn it back to you, co-chair Maeda.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the agenda and in my co-chair's absence, I will go ahead and handle this one. The one note I will make on the agenda is item 6E was a discussion of the bylaws and potential approval and I wanted to report to the full commission as well as to the public that sort of an informal working group, ad hoc working group, got together and have been working on the language of the bylaws. Thank you so much to David Holtzman and Brian Stetcher and myself. We're working with council. We're able to put together what we think is close to a consensus draft of bylaws, but we did not want to just, you know, have you review it with very little notice and the public not having enough notice. So we're going to put off formally adopting or having a vote on adoption of the bylaws until next meeting, but I do hope towards the end of this, tonight's meeting, we'll be able to discuss, you know, a couple of the key points that perhaps need further discussion. But that's just a note on 6E. We will not be voting today to approve the bylaws, so just so the public is aware of that. Any other comments on the agenda or I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated? So I don't see...
Has his hand up?
Okay, Commissioner Stetcher?
You are on mute, Commissioner Stetcher.
I move we approve the...
It's been moved.
Agenda.
It's been moved to approve the agenda as circulated. Do I see a second? Or do I hear a second?
My second.
Second.
Commissioner Franklin, seconds. Any further discussion? Let's, I guess we need a roll call vote on the approval of the agenda or not? Not generally?
Um, yes, we need a, we need a roll call vote.
Okay.
Great. So I will now take the roll call. Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Jean Franklin?
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman?
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon?
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura?
Yes.
Commissioner Haley Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Sider Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Priya Shidaran? Commissioner Brian Stetcher?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dorina Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next in order is a public comment for matters not on the agenda. Are there, is there, are there any public members who would like to make a comment on matters that are not on the agenda?
And co-chair Maeda, if you would allow me to go through the instructions, because some people will be on the phone and won't be able to visually see them.
Thank you.
For members of the public, if you wish to speak, provide the following information through the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen as though you're completing a public comment card. Please indicate that you would wish to speak, your name and your affiliation or organization. If you are on a phone line, press star nine to raise your hand. Once called upon, press star six to unmute and speak. Each person gets two minutes. When you speak, share your name and affiliation at the beginning, and if you feel comfortable, you can turn on your video while speaking. If you do not wish to speak, again, you can use a Q and A button and again, provide your name, your affiliation, and the public comment you would like to have read aloud. I turn it back to you then, co-chair Maeda. I guess actually Ty will be the one monitoring the Q and A box for you.
So we have Karen Diaz with Chirla who would like to make a public comment. So Karen Diaz, I will promote you to a panelist. Please turn on your mic and if you are comfortable, please share your video and you will have two minutes for your public comment and Gila will be keeping time on that.
And actually I might have to switch and do a different share. Now, why don't you go ahead and begin and I'll get the two minutes out.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Karen Diaz and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, also known as Chirla, an immigrant rights organization in California with national strength. Congratulations to all of you on your selection to Los Angeles County Independent Redistricting Commission. Today, I wanted to stress importance of doing your work in an independent manner. We appreciate the tremendous efforts the county and the commission staff have already taken to ensure the CRC is fully seated and we understand the county still has a role to play in supporting the CRC as they conduct this redistricting process. As an organization that helps educate hundreds of hard to count communities on the census and has been part of the redistricting process from the start, we want to stress it is you, the commission, that should lead and make the critical decisions about how you will execute for an inclusive line drawing process. This includes taking the time to write and direct a public outreach plan that takes into consideration feedback from issue area experts, community advocates, and other stakeholders as well as about in your own training schedule that meets your needs. The commission should also make its own hiring decision when it comes to key walls, including an independent determination of the positions the CRC needs and the job descriptions and request for proposals are seized for disposition. This role will play a critical role in the redistricting process and will shape the commission's engagement with the public and final map that will be in place for the next decade. Thank you again for your time and we look forward to our continued partnership with Los Angeles County Redistricting Commission.
Thank you. Next, we have Kiana Assamontbar from California Common Cause. So Kiana, I will promote you to panelists. If you're, please turn on your mic and if you're comfortable, please share your video. You have two minutes to talk.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kiana Assamontbar. I am the program manager with California Common Cause. First, let me say thank you so much for dedicating your evenings and a good chunk of 2021 to the LA County redistricting process. Your service is greatly, greatly appreciated by the community. I wanted to elevate a few of the points that we sent in a letter for public comment for this meeting alongside our partners. The first point is just about the importance of the independence of this commission and really honoring the, the reason that this commission was created, to put the power of redistricting in the hands of community members. I think all of the commissioners are here and were selected for a reason, whether that be your expertise in a certain subject matter area, your ties to community, and for that reason, this commission is balanced in geography, demographics, and expertise, collectively using that background and information to inform and drive the work of the commission, I think is incredibly important. To that point, I think there are certain pieces that it's really important for the commission to play a lead role in. One, as my colleague mentioned, is the, the role of, you know, selecting consultants, particularly the line drawer and other redistricting consultants that will play a huge role in informing your work. And the other is using your collective expertise to develop the public outreach plan and make sure that LA County's communities are sufficiently engaged in the redistricting process. And I think something that would really help kind of boost the commission's work is ramping up on training. There are a list of trainings that we recommended in our letter and I think getting trained on the Voting Rights Act, the various redistricting requirements outlined in state law, other best practices for engaging the community, having all of that training under your belt will really help inform the decisions that you make moving forward. So I believe there might be a subcommittee already in motion to focus on training, but just wanted to elevate that point and of course, Common Cause and many of our partners would love to assist in developing that training curriculum and even identifying speakers if we can be helpful in that way. Thank you so much.
There are no more general public comment.
Thank you very much for those comments. We did receive two written pieces of, two written correspondence comments, right? Are those considered as part of this, of this part of the meeting?
No, those are considered part of the, the record of this meeting, but they need not be read at this time. They were publicly posted and they are available.
Great. And I think all the commissioners got, got to see that yesterday or today. If you haven't read it yet, I certainly commend those to you. Those are very thoughtful comments and I'm sure the beginning of many written comments and, and public comments we'll be getting as we go through this process. Next on the agenda, I believe, is on the consent matters would be to approve the minutes of the January 27th, 2021 meeting. Does anybody have comments? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve those, those minutes that were circulated?
Commissioner Holtzman has his hand up.
Commissioner Holtzman? You're muted.
I already switched away to my acrobat to read the minutes. I'm back. So two things on the minutes. The first is on page... Whoa, a lot of votes on the minutes. Here we go. On page seven of the, of the draft minutes, where it says public speaker comment, it just lists the people who spoke and, as you know, I was going to watch the San Diego meeting the day after our last meeting and, and I looked into San Diego things. And San Diego, the San Diego County Commission's minutes have a little bit of a summary about the subject each person spoke on. I think it would be great if going forward, we had that in our minutes. I don't know if we need to hold up the approval of our minutes to get that in our, our minutes for the meeting we're talking about now, but it's something I wanted to bring up and if others would like that done for this meeting, that's, that's fine.
Can I address that just for a second? So what I would, what I would propose is that we consider doing that on a going forward basis, but I will note that all of our, the video, the recordings of all the meetings are posted and the public comments are available in full in those recordings. But, you know, I don't have, I don't oppose having a short paraphrase, but I will also note that the San Diego minutes that you alerted me to earlier, I looked at them and, and the public comments were summarized in one section but not in another. So they haven't been consistent all the way through either. But, you know, I mean, we're starting out, we're getting, getting this process going. So it's probably a good idea to put the subject down for the, the public comments.
Thank you, Chairman.
So I think Commissioner Stetcher has a comment probably about that point, I would assume. Commissioner Stetcher?
Okay, can I just respond to Chairman Maeda real fast before? I just wanted to say that the reason I think it's a good thing, a good idea to have a little summary of what they were talking about is so that the reader of the minutes can then decide to go to look at our video of our meeting if they want to see the detailed comment.
Fair enough. Commissioner Stetcher?
I don't object. I just want to keep it short and maybe just the description of the subject because otherwise we'll spend a lot of time at our meetings discussing the description of the, of the comments when each of us resonated with some other aspect of it.
Agreed. Commissioner Holtzman, do you want to continue?
Yes, if I, if I could. The section seven in the minutes, the draft minutes, is the future agenda items. And I have some changes because, well, especially the first paragraph, to the first paragraph, because it's what I said and I wanted to get it to be more precise. I think I emailed, I know I emailed it to the chair, what how I'd like that to read. Can I put that on the screen now just so people can see how I think it should read? Or how would you like to work it?
That's fine if you're able to do that. You have share screen privileges.
That's a good question. We probably do. I have in the past. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Is that working? Sure. There you go. So, um, let's see. I'm gonna, I guess I'll open, but I'll make it even bigger. So you can see the email I sent and here's the text, how I would like it to read. And below that, you can see the strike through underline Microsoft Word actual edits, but I would just think it should, should say that I asked that these, the following be placed on future agenda. One, a report on the San Diego Citizens Independent Commission, well, Independent Redistricting Commission, actually, whose meeting I was planning to watch. You can see that. And then two, there's no changes, item two, three. I just wanted to point out that I thought, that, yeah, I wanted the county system for posting agendas put on our agenda and that I point out that I thought that that system is violating the Brown Act. And then to clarify point four, it was about, instead of the commission having approved, it was to talk about requiring the commission pre-approval of the website, press releases and outreach. And then five, to be more precise about that, I was talking about asking the state legislature to move the 2022 primary election date to September, given the likelihood 2020 census data will be delayed. And then just two small changes in the next two paragraphs. One should say co-chair Maeda and I suppose it also should say co-chair Williams. I took out time durations and just changed that to time. So with, with those amendments, I'd like to suggest in a minute some, but yeah, put co-chair Williams in the last sentence and San Diego County Independent Redistricting Commission in the first line of the changes from item seven. So I'll, I'll leave that up. Does everybody know how to do the, the gallery view so they can see themselves and everybody else when somebody's sharing their screen? Okay, so you can all, you can all see everybody in that. Should I take it off or does anybody want me to leave it on for long? Because I can take it off with just one click.
Well, don't you go ahead and take it off and if someone wants it back, they can, they can put it back. I don't, not sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about that. But Commissioner Wong, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I just had, I kind of, it's a kind of a question. Now, I understand, I believe that, yeah, Commissioner Holtzman, you had mentioned that point about that you believe that the posting of the LA County System for Posting Agendas might be in violation of the Brown Act. I guess I would feel a little more comfortable about that unless you know absolutely that it was a violation, that maybe we, I would feel more comfortable if you asked for us to check that issue out rather than having kind of an admission that it was a violation.
Oh, we could take, yeah, if you don't want that in the minutes, I'm happy taking that out. I mean, that's a, that's a good point, but...
I, I would just feel more comfortable with that. That's, other than that, that's just my main point.
Fine, thank you.
Commissioner Stetcher?
I think these are in fact the points that Commissioner Holtzman made and so I would move that we adopt the minutes with these amendments, the two amendments that he suggested.
And Commissioner Stetcher, with regard to the point that Commissioner Wong raised, I mean, how do you want to handle that?
Yeah, leave out the phrase about the Brown Act.
Yes, leave out the phrase about the Brown Act and...
Very good. I will...
My intention.
Okay, I will offline talk to Commissioner Holtzman about his concern about that and we'll try to figure out how, if in fact, we're skirting it or getting close or whatever it is, we'll, we'll figure out to make sure we're not in fact violating the Brown Act. Certainly no intention of violating the Brown Act in any regard. We'll make sure we are not doing that. So it's been moved by Commissioner Stetcher to adopt the minutes as amended with Commissioner Holtzman's comments. Dwight, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Haley Soto, seconds. Any further discussion? Let's have a roll call vote then.
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Jean Franklin?
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman?
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon?
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura?
Yes.
Commissioner Haley Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Sider Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Priya Shidaran?
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dorina Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I believe now we're going to the agenda item six, which has several subparts. Do we take all the comment and all of them initially or do we go one by one?
We go one, we go one by one. So you start with 6A and after the staff presentation, take public comment and then after that's resolved, we move on to the next.
Right. So actually, I'm 6A is appointment of an ad hoc working group. Is there a staff presentation on this? Okay, so on the screen you see the, what was distributed as far as the members who have volunteered to be part of the proposed ad hoc working groups. Is there, is there further staff presentation?
Um, no, co-chair Maeda, these are basically the individuals who have signed up and, and they were each asked to identify one of the sub-working, I'm sorry, one of the ad hoc working groups to participate in. The values was the one exception. And so this is the list of the various people who have indicated their interests. There was a request by one commissioner if they might be able to work on more than one.
And is it appropriate for me to comment on that process or do we first take public comment on, on 6A if there is any?
You can, typically right now commissioners can ask questions or clarify questions about the process, et cetera. Once the initial questions are answered, then we take public comment and then it comes back to the commission for action.
I do recall that now, sorry. So my comment on this is that co-chair Williams and I did have a, many communications, either phone calls, emails exchanged, or in a couple of cases, meetings with individual commissioners. I also know that staff circulated a sort of a survey of folks who, if they wanted to sign up for certain working groups. And I believe based on that, Commissioner Obregon said he would like to serve as well on the values. Was it the values and the mapping and demography committees or subcommittees?
Actually, the mapping one is really, it's in my forte and everything. The values, I'm not sure how I volunteered myself for that. I think I might have misread the question, but if needed, of course, I'll be there.
Okay, but your primary interest is in the mapping and, and demography?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put you down for that one. And then Commissioner Vento is not here to defend himself, but I believe he was interested also in the values one. And I guess, I mean, there is also a question about whether folks ought to be, you know, being part of more than one, one group, because some of these are going to be a lot of work. I know the values one is going to be a shorter term one though, so I thought it might be okay for Mr. Vent, Commissioner Vento, to be part of the, the values one. But as I said, I actually, after exchanging some emails with him, I have not spoken to him and then he's not here. So they will hold that a little bit. But were there any, any other commissioners who wanted to volunteer for any of these other groups?
Commissioner Holtzman has his hand up, then Commissioner Dorina Wong and then Commissioner Stetcher?
Commissioner Holtzman?
Okay, my hand's not up to volunteer. Is that all right if I speak to other issues or do you want to hear first from volunteers?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. First, I just wanted to point out that the list that's up on the screen now is slightly different than the list that was sent out to me at least. Didn't have the two columns and things, but that's all right. It also has a fourth person on the redistricting mapping tools and demography. That working group that I'm, that I'm on, so that'll help, that'll help with the, making the job a little easier. The thing I wanted to say is I don't think we need a values working group. I think it's a bit much. I mean, I know a lot of nonprofits are putting, you know, putting together value statements and it's a big new thing for, you know, consultants when they're working with organizations to have, to have them do that. But we're, we're a government commission just here to do the job. The job is pretty well defined in law. So I don't think we need a values, I prefer we not have a values working group. I prefer we not have a values working group to come up with the value statement. It's just extra work for all of us. So just that I would put that out there that that's that's what I think about that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dorina Wong, then Commissioner Stetzer.
Thank you. Yes, I think Gaila mentioned that she spoke with somebody that might be interested in participating in more than one work group. I don't know if she was referring to me, but one thing that I was thinking of was that I am very interested in the public outreach plan and making sure that we reach all communities, the diverse communities in LA County, but also that I am also interested in the redistricting and the mapping tools and and seeing the community mapping maps that other, you know, the community submits. And so and there's also seems to be a public outreach component to that as well. So I was thinking that I could maybe jump on later in the process for the redistricting because, you know, the the line drawn probably wouldn't be taking place till maybe after the public hearings. So I was hoping that 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 would be, you know, a good way to kind of use kind of what my interests and skills would be. And I would just probably just correct the spelling on, you know, on this on this my name on this document.
Commissioner Stetzer.
I just had a question for the co-chairs. Well, I guess in this case for Commissioner Maeda, and that is having spent some time talking with people about this, do you still feel like this is a good set of ad hoc working groups? I know they were presented to us by by the Gala or their team, and we didn't actually generate them ourselves. And at first they seemed reasonable to me, but I know you've now spent a bit more time thinking about it. Does this seem like the right set? I'm somewhat sympathetic to what Commissioner Holtzman said about the the questioning whether we need a values group to actually meet. But what do you and Commissioner Williams think after working through it?
Thank you. Clearly, the three groups, public outreach, redistricting and demography and subject matter experts. No, no question, those are groups that would be very helpful in terms of getting the work done for this commission. The values group, I think, could be helpful. I'm not entirely clear what that you know, what the process will be or what that will involve and how that will inform our our work at the at the commission. I'm I'm open to hearing more. And I know there was a plan for that working group to be to get together to discuss things and maybe from that and and co-chair Williams is part of that. And so I was hoping to find out what they had to say before I decided I liked it or didn't like it. I just I personally, I just not sure. I'm open to thinking about that one. But Commissioner Williams seemed to want to at least have the meeting to to investigate it. So I thought that was appropriate.
Commissioner Morales, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say on just the idea of the values, just because we state something in our bylaws doesn't necessarily mean that it plays out in real life. And so I believe that values plays a north star of guiding principles for inclusion and belonging. I think that's important. So just want to provide a different perspective on that.
Thank you. Were there others who have comment or questions of this of the staff?
Co-chair Maeda, I just also wanted to make a correction in addition to the typo and Dorina Wong's name, Commissioner Wong's. It's actually Commissioner John Vento who had signed up for values. And they have already, I know he's already reached out to the group to identify a time for them to meet.
As opposed to one of the others or?
That's the only one I know that they began to figure out times that they might get together and start talking about values. And I think they're targeting either later this week or next week.
Okay, great. And then the other thing I was going to mention is that we had been thinking about the possibility of having either another subgroup or having just a some sort of a liaison of the commission to other CRCs or independent redistricting commissions, whether it's statewide, San Diego, Santa Barbara, to, you know, check in, develop best practices. Those kinds of things have sort of a CRC liaison thing. And I didn't know whether that should be a working, you know, subgroup or whether I know David Holtzman, Commissioner Holtzman is very interested in this and has already begun to you know, attend some of the other meetings and so forth. And perhaps if there's no need for an entire subgroup, we can just appoint Mr. Holtzman to be that person to report to us occasionally as to what the other CRCs were doing. In addition to that, it's been suggested maybe we might need other subgroups. And certainly as the need arises, we can do that. I know somebody suggested a voting rights group to focus on that issue. But and we'll see if whether that's something that is needed and we could certainly appoint additional subgroups as needed.
There Stetzer has his hand up and then Commissioner Holtzman?
Yes, Commissioner Stetzer.
Thanks. I'd also be willing to be on the subject matter experts group if it needs additional membership.
Commissioner Holtzman.
On the liaison idea, I would love to have help. So I prefer not to be just the only one doing it. Okay.
Commissioner Mendoza, you have your hand up?
Yes, Commissioner Williams is also, is my understanding, on the subject matter expert working group. She's been myself, Commissioner Vento. And she have been discussing when to get together. So there are three people, is my understanding, this on this working group.
Okay. Just taking notes of this. Anybody else have any comments before we take public comment on this, if there if there is any? Ty, are there public comments on this item six A?
There are no public comments for six A.
Is there any further discussion by any of the commissioners? Now, I've been I've been told that because this is appointment of ad hoc working groups that we can simply appoint them. And so I would I'm announcing that these are the working subgroups that we have at this point, the public outreach, redistricting slash demography, subject matter experts, values and a CRC liaison person slash group to be determined. But with David Holtzman as part of that. I would like to, and I understand there's been interest in in the some of these groups by these folks. And so I would like also to announce that the lead for the public access outreach will be Commissioner Morales. The lead for the redistricting demography subgroup will be Commissioner Sridoran. The lead for the subject matter experts working group will be Commissioner Mendoza. And I'm not quite sure about the values one, whether that has been totally sorted out or not. I know that both Commissioner Vento and Commissioner Chair Co-chair Williams had expressed interest. So I think maybe we should not announce a lead for that yet. And if there is a group for the CRC liaison, then David Holtzman, I think, would probably agree to be the lead in that one. Commissioner Obregon, did you have comment?
Yeah, like I said earlier, the values I when I I might have made a mistake in selecting that. So I don't necessarily need to be considered there, but if needed, of course, I will.
Okay, I we certainly do not want to impose a group that was selected by mistake. We can, we'll take you off the values one at this point. Let us know if you change your mind, you want to be back on that. But we've got you down for the redistricting demography one.
And that's good.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes, hi. So I was thinking that actually, you know, the subject matter experts slash CRC education could also involve maybe because part of CRC education could be the liaison. Because I believe you would want to be trying to learn from what the other redistricting commissions are doing. So we could I I might suggest merging that into that committee, but that was just something that seemed possible. And then the other question is, since this is by appointment, that does that mean that later on, if I wanted to join, let's say, the redistricting committee or work group that I could, I could join those meetings?
What I would suggest, Commissioner Wong, is is I don't see any impediment to you joining the redistricting or putting you on the list of the redistricting slash demography working group right now. With the understanding that your view is that you will be, you want to be involved in that. You may not be, you know, if you have capacity now, that'd be great to do both. But at least you want to be involved for at a later point. So I'm happy to put you on on that on the list for now. Would that work for you?
Oh, okay. Well, sure. I I just want to make sure if there's somebody else on there. Because we have to be conscious of the number that I don't want to take somebody else's place if they want to do it now. So you know, with that caveat, that would be fine with me.
Okay, great. Commissioner Stetzer.
Just to clarify, we've heard a couple of comments from the public this evening about the importance of getting the right kinds of training. Does that fall within the purview of this group on subject matter experts? Or is that as a yet un- unassigned task to sort out training needs?
It's a good question.
If I may, co-chair.
Yes, yes.
Subject matter experts are the ones who should be looking at the training. I would call more education. They are to identify the experts to bring in, to meet with you, to talk to you about a range of topics. And, you know, that will be that component. And I know some of these groups that have presented are already organizing lists of people whom they'd like to propose.
And clearly, training, whoever is going to train needs to train everybody, right? It doesn't it's not effective to train four people when there's 14 commissioners. So clearly that would happen. But it's I think the group is going to select the folks who will help train the rest of us, basically. As I understand it.
That is correct.
Recommend.
Recommend, exactly, for for consideration. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Next item is six B. Oh, public access plan. So on this one, we do have a staff report to us, right?
Yes, that is correct. So we have sent out ahead of time, we've posted for the Publix review, a draft of public outreach plan. I wanted to thank the various people on the commissioner working group because we did have an ad hoc working group to receive and put on an earlier draft. Since I circulated that, I received additional input from the various commissioners that helped expand the list of potential organizations to include. And I'd also like to introduce to you all Carlos Dalba, who's a marketing, media and outreach consultant who will be working with us on this. And if you'd like, Carlos, I'm going to have you just introduce yourself. I've put up here a little bit of background about his experience. He brings more than 18 years of experience. A lot of his work has been with Cause Communications. You'll see the list of his media clients range from first five to Los Angeles County Departments to LA Carey Health Plan. And Carlos, why don't you say hi and just expand a little bit more on your background?
Hello, everybody. Pleasure meeting you all. I I actually have been in the advertising media consulting business for for a long time. And most of my clients have have been nonprofits pro bono. So I'm actually very excited to be part of the team and I'm here for any questions that you guys may have.
It might help if I also just sort of hit some highlights on the public outreach plan itself. And then you can ask Carlos more questions. We can open up to the public and then we can discuss it further. There are a couple of things that we want to use in terms of helping to get the word out. One is obviously the CRC website, which is we're testing it right now with a soft launch. They have a mechanism called GovDelivery that will help us have a more structured way to get information out. We're proposing building on existing networks. One of the challenges with the CRC is you basically have a 12-month life. And most of the outreach is going to occur during the last six to eight months of your tenure during this year. So our hope is to reach large numbers of organizations that represent a good cross-section of various groups that represent the diversity of Los Angeles County. We'd like to launch two workshops in sometime in March. One would be for community-based organizations. The other one would be for counties, cities, agencies to really talk to them about background information, what redistricting is about, what the calendar is like, and what kind of information they would like in promotional toolkits to help get the word out. We are planning to prepare promotional toolkits in 12 threshold languages. These 12 threshold languages are consistent with the ones from the census work, and it covers approximately 96% of the county's LEP population and is in compliance with what we are required to do in terms of the election code. Carlos will be working on the media. I'm getting the media attention, media buys. A lot of this is going to be around promoting the public hearings to start, particularly the seven that will happen in April, May, and possibly into June. Then there's going to be need to get the word out in terms of workshops for learning how to use a software and to submit redistricting plans once we get the census data in the summer months. And then, of course, your review of the redistricting plans, your development of your own redistricting plan and two public hearings on that in the fall. You'll see a table on the right. This is approximately how many emails we have collected when we begin to launch this outreach plan. We're building on the 1,900 organizations that have signed up for the census. I have in the public outreach plan that they represent over 500 organizations. And I know a number of the commissioners have already identified areas where there are gaps, for example, in churches and religious organizations. If we reach out to Los Angeles City with their neighborhood councils, they have some. I believe it's over 90 of them now, and they represent a board members of about 1,800 to get word out. We also have pulled out the emails from the 2011 bordering redistricting committee, and there are about 1,100. The executive office did send out an email to make sure those emails were current or that individuals still wanted to be on. We have approximately 721 media outlets outlets also identified through the county. So that's sort of an overview with what is actually in the public outreach plan itself. And I think the key thing is to keep in mind this timeline that we're working against. The idea was for January to be the time for you as commissioners to get organized, get your bylaws, receive your Brown Act training. February, March is where we really need to get this public outreach plan rolling. We need to get your input. We need to refine it. And then we need to begin to prepare for the two outreach workshops. I've mentioned already the seven public hearings come spring, the mapping come summer, and then the aggressive schedule come fall to develop the final one. So the public outreach plan follows this calendar. And with that, co-chair Maeda, I'll turn it back to you and we can answer questions of clarification or I can, you can turn it over for any questions from the audience.
Any points of clarification, questions for staff? Any points of clarification, questions for staff? Seeing, oh, Commissioner Stetcher.
Sorry, not intended to delay. There are points in here where decisions have to be made that might involve priorities. How will this plan be discussed by the commission and decisions made? Like where to spend money on media buys and which, which avenues we think are the most. Productive for reaching under, usually under-reached groups and such as that.
Coach, you want me to take that question or is that a point of clarification? Do we want to wait for a discussion? I, I will just mention in terms of the budget, I put it in the plan, what has been budgets a hundred thousand dollars for media buys. What we don't know is if that'll be enough. One of the reasons why I wanted to use Carlos is he's very resourceful in getting some free advertising and marketing. We will know when we do the seven public hearings if we're not reaching enough groups or if we are reaching enough groups. If we are reaching enough groups, then we know we're. Getting the momentum we need. If we need to invest more money in the media buy, then I'll need to go to the county and ask for more money.
Commissioner Stetcher, did that respond to your, your question?
It's a first step. Is the public outreach working group going to be more active in. Working through these decisions and bringing to us about whom to emphasize and where to put priorities and whether we need more money or not?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly why I felt we needed working groups. And so the next steps. When we meet as a working group, which will be next Tuesday. Is to really think about those workshops come March. Because those are going to be ones where we're really are reaching out to those organizations and new organizations that want to learn about what is this process about? Because we're going to rely on them to help market it, to help send it out to their constituents. So you've already heard today, for example, from Common Cause. If Common Cause agrees to partner in this effort, which I think they will. They probably have hundreds, if not thousands of members that they can help get the word out as well. So you as commissioners, you will be well-served if we get a good cross-section. Of organizations that can work with their constituents and submit well-thought-through plans that reflect the broader community that they serve.
And, and clearly, we populated the, or we certainly encouraged commissioners to volunteer. For that group who do have a lot of different kinds of contacts and networks in various communities. But I'm sure if any of us who aren't on that committee. Have our own ideas for groups or whatever they might be, faith-based groups. Volunteer organizations, one type or another, nonprofits, whatever it is. We should let folks know on that, on that subcommittee, on that working group, then they could integrate them in or at least consider integrating those other. Resources in. Commissioner Wong.
And let me just add that the list and the attachment is just our starting point. So please send over any of those names and ideas. We're going to want to get them signed up through the Gov Delivery. So that they will know of these workshops and these meetings going forward.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes, thank you. I, I would also. Want to just piggyback on Commissioner Stetcher's comments about decision-making and. I, I, as part of that Public Access Work Group. I do think we would come back to the larger commission to. Get approval for, I guess, final decisions around. Oh, I don't know what the process will be. I don't know if we'll discuss that within the working group or if we would discuss that with the co-chairs or. But I do think it would be good. To have an understanding of what kind of decisions the working group could make versus what we need to bring back to the. Commission as a whole. And, and, and just even a broader question about our budget. I realize that I have no idea what our budget is. And I know that, you know, I was looking at the San Diego list of, or it was a state commission ad hoc groups and. You know, one of them is around the budget and I think Commissioner Holtzman had suggested this, but. I guess it wouldn't, would be useful for us to know what our budget is because. Just as Gaila, you said, if we needed more money for media buys, we'd have to go back to the county. I didn't. Realize what the process for that is. And so I think as commissioners, we should kind of understand what we're working with in terms of budget. So we know, you know, at any rate, we, we have a process for that.
So if I could just address that, the budget point very briefly, the co-chair. Coach Williams and I have met and discussed. What would, what would be appropriate to put on future agendas? And that, obviously, we're still love to hear from you on your thoughts on what future agenda items would be. But one of the top items for next time, in addition to approving the bylaws, is to have a presentation from a county representative about the budget. So we have a better understanding of what we're working with, what we might need to ask for more money for. To, you know, review consultants. Our staff's, you know, budget, the bases for various line items that are in there right now that, you know, can, we can change. All those kinds of issues, we're going to get more information about it the next, at the next meeting. And as far as what authority the subgroup has to make decisions. I, I mean, my understanding is that it's more doing work, preparing recommendations. And then bringing that to the full commission, because the full commission is, is, has to pass on whatever it is, whether it's a request for increasing of the budget. Modifying the outreach plan to focus more on direct mail versus paid advertising or whatever, whatever it might be. You know, certainly the working group is going to be able to do a lot of that work, but in. Probably in the form of a recommendation to the full commission to pass on it, is my understanding.
If, if I could, Coach, may I jump in on that and just reiterate that. The ad hoc working groups are developing recommendations. They do not make final decisions. And those recommendations will be coming back to the full commission for full deliberation at a publicly noticed meeting. And so that's how the process will work.
Thank you. Commissioner Holtzman.
Right, so we're on clarifying questions now, right?
We're supposed to be asking staff of clarifying questions, yes.
Good, okay, because then I want to hear public comment. Then I'll have comments on the.
Absolutely.
And everything. Okay, so the draft that's presented relies heavily on something called the Census twenty twenty project. And that's a, a project that was initiated by the County Board of Supervisors. And I noticed that in the list of interested groups that's in the attachment. KH Consulting appears. So I'd like to ask for clarification on, I'd like to hear. What the role of KH Consulting was in that project if they had any contracts for. Paid to do any work and. You know, how, 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 how that worked and. Who they reported to or whatever. So perhaps Gaila, you can talk about that role or maybe Carlos, you were involved as well. I don't know.
KH Consulting Group, I was involved. It was on the front end. We helped with the development of the kiosk strategy. As a means at the beginning, this was pre-COVID nineteen, to try to make sure there would be greater public access. We also helped develop and review the overall strategic plan on the front end.
Okay, so you were a contractor?
We were a contractor to the census. It was the unincorporated area staff that were running this. Well, it was a special group put in together within that. That contracted with us and we did that work. I think it was from fall of twenty eighteen through about March of twenty nineteen. But once it went COVID and the kiosk strategy changed, because that was no longer going to be the model, we then were no longer involved.
So kiosk, you're going to have people enter their census data in the kiosk scattered around the county?
So the challenge at the time, as you can imagine, was the digital divide. That so many of the communities that would be hard to count did not have computer access. So there was a lot of effort put in on the front end to identify hundreds and hundreds of locations in the hard-to-count communities. Where libraries could be open, community groups could make computers available, staff would be trained to help people to access and complete the census.
Okay, so instead we got, what do you call them? Vote-by-mail drop-off boxes around the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Cyrus Soto.
I think Commissioner Franklin, we have been ahead of you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, thank you. I have a question really to Carlos. As it relates to marketing and outreach. I know looking at the plan that there are two workshops scheduled for. Tentatively scheduled for February and March. And as far as outreach. To the faith-based and religious organizations. Are there currently any strategic plans being developed right now? Initially targeting some of the hard-to-reach groups, particularly the religious and faith-based organizations.
Yeah, it's still, it's still under development and we should have something to share with everybody pretty soon. So everything, it's actually under development at this point.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, since I am on the, the Subcommittee of Outreach. That we do real aggressive outreach to our faith-based. And religious organizations because they're on ground level. And usually people, these are working people and they're not involved in any type of nonprofit, basic organizations. So I just want to put that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cyrus Soto, please.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm thinking about. The timeline that the working groups are going to be moving on. And how we might coordinate, because as I think about the, I, I'm in the. Public Access. Working group and thinking about. Where there might be experts that we, we want to hear from or rely on. I know in addition to our expert community partners. And as, as the other group on subject matters are, you know, bringing forward recommendations or suggestions. How we might collaborate with that group and that's just one example, but I think that's something that's currently unclear to me. It's how do we make sure as each of the working groups is moving forward, there's. You know, there's some, some, some cross-collaboration there. So that's, that's a question I have.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Soto, I think we're going to have a need for that kind of cross-realization across the whole group. Because the demography group are going to be identifying experts as well. That would be beneficial to present as well. So I think we'll probably funnel those suggestions through the subject matter expert group. So they can put it together in an integrated thoughtful rollout of the training and topics being brought forward to you. The good news is you basically have February, March, April. To have subject matter experts come and talk to you on a range of topics. So I do think we will have to have that kind of interchange across the working groups.
If I, if I could just jump in right here and say that we'll need to be cautious and, you know, I'll work with Gaila and we'll come up with some guidelines. But we don't want to inadvertently. Turn an ad hoc working group that's less than a quorum into suddenly more than a quorum by this cross-communication. So. Well, I hear what your concern is, but I also want to make sure that we stay within the bounds of the Brown Act. So. I'll work with Gaila and we'll, we'll come up with some guidelines.
You can use me as a bit of a traffic cop to, to move that information from one group to the next as well. Did you have another question, Commissioner Soto?
You can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm pleased to recognize that my co-chair Williams is here. I'm glad you're able to join us. We are in the middle of talking about the Public Outreach Plan, but I think we're about to. Open it up for public comment, if any.
Okay. On this.
My building has his hand up.
I beg your pardon? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I want to make a comment on this topic. I think it's absolutely wonderful that community, community-based organizations, advocacy groups. Certainly faith-based organizations are going to be, there's going to be a focus as it pertains to outreach. And are we also going to be. In communication with and, and in the city councils and town councils that in theory. Are to be representing all constituents and not groups and segments of the population. Is your outreach going to be directed there too?
Yeah, in fact, we need to make sure that all eighty-eight cities are included. So the two workshops in March, one would be for community-based organizations. And the second one would be for cities, county departments. Educational enterprises like LAUSD, the community colleges. And other government entities, because their outreach strategy may be a little bit different. And obviously, they will have their own interest in terms of drawing the maps.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's take public comment, if any, on, on this item. Is there any?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay. Any further discussion about the, the plan that is before you now? Recognizing that the working group has been, you know, working on this, developing it. Do people feel comfortable approving this plan at this point? You want to have further discussion on it? Do you want to send it back to the working group or, or how do you want to proceed with this? We definitely need to, you know, we don't have a lot of time. We need to get going on, on the public outreach and certainly we could be modifying this as we go as well, but. I'll just, you know, raise whether or not this is something you're, you are ready to approve at this point.
Commissioner Holtzman, you have your hand up?
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely. We're not ready to approve this. I'm not ready to approve this. Wouldn't be comfortable. Time, the first time we're getting a really good look at a lot of it. And, and first time I've had a chance to go through it. My, my concern about KH Consulting, et cetera, and. Now, what you might have done is be, is because. Like I pointed out, the, the plan right now relies very heavily on the Census twenty twenty project. And I think relying too much on a census project. Will be, will be wrong. In this case, that particular project, as I mentioned, was, you know, started by the Board of Supervisors. And I would like there to be a clean break between that project and what we're doing, because if people see us treating our business. This closely related to the supervisors' outreach, that will call into question our independence. And, and here's more on why I think. We shouldn't think that we need to do as much work on outreach as the census team had to do. Okay, so the, every ten-year census, it, it serves more purposes, many more purposes than just redistricting. All right. And, and they're going to see when, when I go on here that I'm being kind of like a fiscal conservative here. I don't think. We should be spending too much taxpayer money on, on outreach if we, if we don't need to, or at least we should be targeting it properly. And that's another reason I don't think we should approve the plan today is because I think we need to have the budget before us. And discuss the allocations for different line items before we approve the plan. So redistricting, it only serves limited purposes, right, compared to the census. Your target audiences, not the same. Census input. Is, you know, individual by individual or household by household. That's, that's the type of data that are collected and that's. The input that's needed. Now for redistricting, the input to us, we only need to get input from a set of groups. Whose members vote alike. We don't need individuals telling, you know, coming before us saying, well. No, there's no member of my ethnic group, you know, on the Board of Supervisors, so I think you need to change the districts. We need to get proposals from community leaders and leaders of groups who can show us. Geographic areas where their members are and why they vote alike, so that we shouldn't split up those communities of interest when we're drawing districts. so that we shouldn't split up those communities of interest when we're drawing districts. So spending taxpayer money and our time, this is another thing to emphasize here, we're not being paid for this. San Diego's mission, so then they're not being paid for this. Our time is valuable and I don't think we need to spend tons and tons of our time on this. We can obviously delegate some of the outreach. But so spending taxpayer money and our time on census scale outreach to get groups input, okay? On the census scale outreach was just way too much more than we need. We need to, what we need to do is focus on getting groups input, okay, that, that's good. On redistricting, and what we're working on here, just to keep it in perspective, is just five districts. We're going to be drawing five districts. And because we have staggered terms and the terms are four years for the office and our districts will only last for a decade, what we're doing will affect an average of 2.5 elections per voter. All right, the, the state redistricting commission is doing, I think I calculated an average of like 15 and a half elections per voter because they have all sorts of different types of districts. So anyway, I just think it would be too expensive, burdensome and ridiculous to do census level, census scale outreach. And then, yeah, I was questioning the $100,000 for media buys. I think the main thing, one thing I would insist in this plan, and the main thing we really need is for equitable opportunity for input, we need to have a notice mail to every registered voter in the county. And we need that more than we need other media buys. I would like to have, before the next time we discuss this, someone approach the registrar of voters' office and find out how much they would charge to mail a notice for us, be it a postcard or be it a flyer in an envelope. And if they can't do it, I mean, we can also hire somebody else to buy them. Everything is about voting, not where you live, I mean, not, you know, not all these other things, your, your incomes and things and, it's not household by household and it's not, you know, redistricting is about voting. It's not, it's not for allocating funds, for instance. It's not, I mean, obviously in redistricting, we're going to use all the people living in a district, but, you know, children are voters and it's really voting groups that we need input from. So that's, that's my main point is that we need to have a notice mail to every registered voter in the county as part of this and then, and then take it from there. So I just, I just wanted to say that, I don't think that list of who we should be reaching out to should include politicians, you know, individual offices of politicians. Sure, cities might want to know what's going on, but we're not supposed to break cities up if we can all avoid it. So cities should be left whole and we should reach out to cities to let them know that's one of our criteria. So anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. But I think it's a work in progress and I would not vote to approve it now. Thank you.
So next we have Commissioner Morales, then Commissioner Stetcher, Commissioner Shideran and Commissioner Orpanella Segura.
I just wanted to say, we can't think about this process as a practical versus democratic process. This is a democratic process and so folks, if individuals want to provide the content or, you know, comment on, on drawing the map of the lines, they have that option. So I think we need to broaden our perspective in terms of that. The idea around Census 2020 was Census 2020 efforts were for the hard-to-count communities. And so these are the folks that we actually want to hear from. So I just wanted to reiterate those two points.
Commissioner Stetcher, then Commissioner Shideran and Commissioner Orpanella Segura.
Commissioner Holtzman makes a lot of really interesting and, and important arguments. I don't agree with them all, but, but I think we're, we're jumping too far ahead that what we're doing tonight is setting up some informal groups who are going to tackle these kinds of thorny questions and come back to us where we can have a debate about how to spend resources. I don't think we want to spend our time tonight arguing about whether there should be an email to every citizen in the county or whether we should cheaply reach 3,000 people using existing email lists. So I don't think we need to approve anything except maybe acknowledging this set of assignments and getting down, getting those committees down to work so that we can begin to have formal plans to look at, at our next meeting or two meetings down the road.
Commissioner Shideran.
Thank you. So just a couple of things, big picture on the public outreach plan. I agree with Commissioner Morales. I don't think that the focus, the redistricting is voting-oriented, right? It's not, there are people who will have an interest in redistricting that go beyond the people who vote, right? Communities of, and variety of people. As far as, I guess, I didn't interpret the public outreach plan to suggest that we would base the plan and the effort on the outreach involved in the census, but that rather we would use the existing networks of organizations who did census outreach to the populace. We're not mimicking the outreach to the populace, we're using the network built. And that's not uncommon with redistricting work to use essentially, for the people that work on census outreach, the CBOs that are passionate about census outreach and making sure everyone is counted, there's a tremendous overlap between that group of organizations and leaders and people and people who are interested in redistricting because so much of it is about ensuring representation. And, and, and for folks who are interested in the census primarily because of its resource allocation implications, redistricting has tremendous resource allocation implications and governance implications as well. So from my perspective, using a census network, a census network to, to help us reach, to identify CBOs that can help us get meaningful input from people who have been trained in the complexity of this process is a really important thing. I don't think that, that's, I don't think that's too expansive. I think that's kind of a good starting point. And as far as, and my understanding of the outreach plan is that it is largely CBO-driven. In fact, if anything, I think the tricky piece is making sure that, that your, that the CBOs included in that plan and reach through that plan are encompassing enough to capture people who aren't already specifically active, right? To capture that input that might otherwise be missing from the process. So on the whole, I think the plan is, I feel comfortable with the plan. I also, you know, I, I wouldn't mind waiting. I, I don't want to wait too long because I think we need to get this thing going and get the boat in the water. And I also think it's really important that, so two things. One, you know, if people feel if there's an opportunity, if we wait till the next meeting to approve the public outreach plan to get more input from kind of the CBOs we'd be reaching out to to participate, to see if they think it's reasonable, sensible, thoughtful, I think that could be useful. The other thing that I think is important is that we have, you know, kind of a regular report back on how it's going, right? So that, and I'm sure that will be happening with the working group and the working group can determine when the commission needs to discuss, right? So if it is unfolding and it's not as effective, right? And frankly, to some extent, at least with digital marketing, the media, the media spending will tell us whether we're reaching people or not in that regard, right? So I think that we, there's a lot of feedback that a well-run outreach plan can generate on pretty short order that will help us gauge its effectiveness. And I think we need to make sure we're doing that kind of along the way so that we don't get months into it and then feel like either we or the, or the members of the public or organizations that are active in this process feel like we sort of fell short in making sure we captured as much input as possible.
Commissioner Orpanella Segura.
Okay. I, I do believe that we could spend a little more time in giving our commissioners time to review the access plan. But I want to stress that I think not focusing or dismissing the outreach plan is a disservice to the county and to the groups that we are set out to represent. And similar to Commissioner Shideran's comments, using the 2020 Census Network is just building on existing relationships that we were able to build. So rather than starting from scratch, we're using what was already built. And given our short timeline, I think it's best to try to squeeze as much as possible as we can from networks that, that the county has built, that other CBOs have built. So I, I don't think it's mimicking the 2020 Census efforts. It's simply just using the existing relationships that were built during that process.
Any other questions or comments? Are there areas that you feel having, you know, I realize you haven't had, you haven't lived with this document for that long, but if you've reviewed it, as I hope you have, are there areas that you think are lacking that you want the working group to go back and add in or consider? Or is there, you know, Commissioner Holtzman has suggested certain things that he thinks were, are not effective or misplaced or lack, you know, aren't the right priority? Are there things that, that, you know, anybody else who hasn't spoken feel similarly or have suggestions for other areas that should be looked into or other ideas regarding the media buy, whether that's smart or not? Or maybe not enough or whatever? I mean, if there's other things you want the working group to focus on and as they next meet, before the next meeting, now's the time to, to raise them.
Commissioner Holtzman has his hand up.
Okay, I, I'll get to him, but I want to make sure I have other folks who have not perhaps yet spoken indicate something. Yes, Commissioner Cyrus Soto.
I just want to add that I, I'm thinking about the public comments made today. And one that stands out is, is sort of the, this, this encouragement that we think about how we as commissioners operate as independently as, as is possible. Not, of course, it's necessary. And so I am, I am looking forward to going back into the working group and thinking about that is making sure that we are looking at, at every aspect of this outreach plan and thinking about, you know, how we build on, on the work that's already been done. Because I think that the work that was done for the 2020 census was impactful. And so it makes sense to build on that. And then also how do we make sure that, you know, that, that we're looking closely at some of the other pieces that Commissioner Holtzman brought up is if we have a budget, how are we independently making decisions around how we invest that budget in this outreach plan? So looking forward to going back in, into the working group and thinking through that some more.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Haley Soto, Commissioner Haley Soto.
Yes, I'd just like to just reiterate that, also just kind of taking notes. I am part of the Public Access Ad Hoc. So, you know, my plan was just to kind of go more, a little bit more into detail with the, the working group next week, next Tuesday. But I am taking notes kind of what the topics that are being brought up. Hopefully we'll have a little bit more of a refined product to present for the public to review and the commission to eventually vote on collectively.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Holtzman, but I'd like to wrap up. If we're not going to be voting today, if I'd like to wrap up this part as quickly as possible to move on to the next agenda item, but go ahead and, and take a couple of minutes.
Okay, I'll try and make quick. So I don't have any objections to using the email list. What, what, I do have objections involving politicians. What I was trying to get at with that part was that I do think we need to make sure that we're not giving supervisors any more free publicity if, if we do this, that we stress our independence from supervisors while we do this. The census project was a supervisors' project and they're, if you go to the website, they're all over the, they're all over that. So, and, you know, in regards that, we, we actually need to heed a constitutional value, okay? It's written in the state constitution that the powers of incumbency must be limited. All right, if we actually have a list of commission values, I think limiting the powers of incumbency should be near the top. And that's one of the reasons why independent redistricting has become so popular. So back to the plan itself now, two things. One, really briefly, I don't like the logo entirely, the way it is now. I love everything except for the year. It's not just about 2021. I'd love to see the logo changed. So it's 2020, 2030 or 2020 because the, I think the state's redistricting commission is 2020, not 2021. So that's just a comment. And then also like on page, when you have page 21 of the Public Access Plan, it has the criteria for redistricting maps. I don't know necessarily has to be in there, but I guess it is. And it's the same, this error is here, number four on that list on page 21. It's here and it's also on the now-launched online website. There's nothing in our mandate that I saw that says that easily identifiable boundaries like natural or artificial barriers should be considered as district lines. River, streets, highways, rail, whatever, but that's in here and that's in there. So it's just something to take out, we should quote the specific statutory language for our commission. What else did I see? I, I don't know. Yeah, I think you're right, Commissioner Maeda. It's time to move on to the next agenda item, whatever that is. But I wanted to just point those things out that jumped out at me.
Thank you, and you're obviously free to, you know, compile suggestions and, and provide them to the, the working group. I'm sure they'll consider them. Okay, great.
One, one more thing, just, you remember from last time I suggested maybe we could get the legislature to push back the primary election to September in 2022? If, if that happens, our, our plan should be flexible enough to, to use that more time for better outreach of some of it.
Okay, thank you. So thank you very much for the, the working group, for your work thus far. I know you could be meeting next week. Good luck on that. Hopefully you'll be able to incorporate some of these ideas. But I, I for one think it's a, it's a terrific start in terms of the kinds of outreach we are definitely going to need to have to get the kind of input that will help make this process as, as fair and, you know, as, as, so that we'll be as knowledgeable as we can while we draw the maps. Thank you for that. So we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting as well to bring back and hopefully approve a plan. Commissioner or co-chair Williams, are you able to take on the next agenda item?
So where we are now is to look at the, give, get an overview and soft launch of the web, of our website. And Gaila's going to do a presentation on this and to, as you, as she talks about it, keep in mind this is a work in progress. So, Gaila?
Hi.
Sorry.
Commissioner Morales has his hand up.
There is a comment that was made on the previous agenda item. Are we going to read that or?
Oh, yes, I see it now. Ty, do you want to read it or do you want me to read it?
I can read it. I wasn't not sure just because it was submitted after the public comment period.
I would, co-chair Baeda, would you like the public comment to be shared orally?
This is a comment that is, it's, it doesn't seem to be relate to the, the pre, the agenda item we were just discussing. It doesn't relate to the next agenda item. So I guess it would be more of a, a sort of a late comment on matters, on just general matters. I, I think we should treat this just as if, as any other kind of written comment that comes in that's not tied to a specific agenda item. Holly, is that, would that be appropriate?
I believe actually in, in looking at the comment, it does relate to the outreach plan. It's why, is how I read it. It, it talks about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it does talk about the census.
I leave to your discretion whether you want to read. It did come in after close the public comment.
Yes, so is this comment, it's on our, you know, screens or whatever as, as part of the Q and A. Yes. So is this comment, it's on our, you know, screens or whatever as as part of the Q and A is, does it automatically, is it automatically part of the public record or does it have to be read to be part of the public record?
I don't I don't know, Ty, if those I don't think it gets shown on the recording. So I think you probably need to read it.
Okay.
Because it does not get captured otherwise.
Since we had no other public comment, I, you know, even though this comes late in the process, I don't have an objection unless unless one of the other commissioners has has an objection to having this comment, this written comment read into the record just to make it part of the public record. We'll we'll do that now. Ty, can you go ahead and do that?
Of course. So the public comment is from Alejandro Ramirez Zerate from the Advancement Project California. Redistricting is important to low income communities of color that have been left out of processes designed for them. These disenfranchised communities include folks like me, an immigrant, a non-voter, who care deeply about our democracy but will not appear on the RR slash CC voter files. All of our communities should be included in the outreach for a process designed to draw lines that will affect them. The 2020 census campaign in LA County was a grassroots campaign, not led by the board of supervisor. This was a people-led campaign. We hope to see the same that same spirit of collaboration for the redistricting process for LA County.
Great, thank you. Okay, back to Co-Chair Williams.
Okay, great. Thank you. Close that down. Okay, so can we move on to the soft launch and information on the website?
Yes, I'd be happy to give you an update on it. I had indicated to you that the county was working with with our staff to try to do a soft launch of the website for CRC and the target was the first week in February. So that's what I'm going to share with you. What is up, what is live and what's available for use and what are the areas we need going forward? You're going to see that there's a pop-up window for people to sign up to get information, which will help a lot. Simultaneously, the executive office has put up a banner that is now being posted to make it easier for people to find information. What we will be doing is using the website to post all the information about your meetings. So there will be one easy place for the public to go to to get the agendas, to get the supporting materials and the minutes. You'll see we have the ability to also translate the website into multiple languages. The nice thing about having it also is we can now go to the registrar recorder, if you're comfortable with this, and the executive office and other departments and ask them to have anyone who inquires about the CRC to roll over to this website so that the public again will have an easier way to gain access. You're going to see the reason why it's not complete is there are areas that we're going to need to add as you approve them, the bylaws, values once developed, the public outreach plan, the public comment card is not done that will make it easier. Like right now, you're only getting maybe five comments at a meeting. When we get into the public hearings, you may have many, many more. So we want a really good way to develop a database so that you can get the public comments and they be sorted by the actual item on the agenda. We also don't have public hearing dates, so that's open. And none of the information on how to actually do mapping won't be available for a few more months. But with that in mind, this is called a soft launch and I'd like to share with you what is available on the website. And I hope I haven't lost it. I had it open. You may need to give me a second to just double check that it's open. Okay. Okay, so this is the website and here you'll see the homepage. And when you scroll down, there are three questions. What is redistricting? Why is redistricting important and what criteria will be used? All of the language from this is the language that was provided to us by the California Secretary of State. And so we are being consistent with what they have as the recommended language for criteria. You'll see down here, there's a little pop-up box. And this again is a reminder for people, if they want to sign up and subscribe, they would basically fill in their email. We would then have them on the distribution list. On the homepage, we also have a repeat of how you can sign up. We have a link that goes to the meetings. If we go across the top, about us, gives a quick overview of the of who you are, the selection process. And right now it includes the actual report, the application process, a video on the random drawing by the auditor controller, and then how the remaining commissioners were selected. Also about us, we have a link to who you all are. And if you look down through the list, you can basically click on a commissioner and you'll get their bio. Also, under about us, when you have the bylaws, we will be adding that document as well. Which again is why it's a work in progress for values we've had to say to be developed. Commission staff. We also have a list of how people can reach us. For meetings, we've separated out the 2020 meetings from the virtual meetings for this year. And again, we've tried to make it a very user-friendly little table. For now, people will submit their public comments through the com serve site, but eventually we hope to have a database public comment card. What we have now, though, is if you go to the meeting like for tonight, you can click on and you can get the agenda. Similarly, you can click on, you can get the PowerPoint, you can go through, you can get the original draft that was posted on Friday, the one that was updated and provided, you can get the initial version of the bylaws, the ones that were then submitted and all the public written comments. So all of this will be in one place. And each week or each two weeks when we add the information, it would be at the top of the table in terms of the meeting information. Down here, you'll also see a calendar for the year. It gives, if you click here, you get the actual calendar for the year that you all had approved. Again, this is a work in progress, if you recall, because there were some dates, particularly as we get into the spring and the and the summer and the fall, we don't have specifically. And then down here, just for a nice visual, again, we hit the key highlights of the calendar of the year for the public. Community outreach. We have a placeholder for the public access plan that should be actually the public outreach plan. When that gets refined, it would go there. When we have dates for the public hearings, again, we will, we have here just the highlights that they're coming. But once we have those, we will be setting up the tables for them as well. Press releases, there's only one, which basically announced your formation, but in the future, these various press releases would be in one place. Making a district map. Again, we don't have anything for mapping software. We do have the map of the current super sorial districts, which you all are very familiar with. But there's some other pieces of information that as we go forward, you need to know about. When we break down the super sorial districts, there are areas that are called unincorporated. They are not cities, but these will be all areas that you will have to be thinking about in terms of redistricting, as well as any organizations that are providing redistricting information. Here you have a list of the 88 cities that again, you're going to have to be working with along with the public as they look at different options. And the other one I just want to mention is when they look at LA City, they've broken LA City into different smaller communities that again are in different super sorial districts. So again, these are the pieces of the various communities that will be your building blocks when you get into redistricting. And then over here, want to know more. Holly's firm has provided us with the links to the actual laws. If there are more laws that should be included on this list, you can add. Just let us know. But again, you click on and you'll actually go to the the bill itself. The other thing we have for resources are frequently asked questions. And again, this is a synthesis from information we've gotten from the state as well as information from the 2011 that has been updated to reflect you. So there's just a series of questions here you can click on. And it will send you more information. So for example, if you don't have access to the internet, there's information about different public libraries that you might go to if you lack Wi-Fi access. In the past, they actually had the libraries open so that people could go there for access as well. But right now, those aren't available at this point. Another area, a frequently of of a reference tool is basically a glossary. And I really encourage you all to look at this where it's easy for us to update the language, to add more glossary terms. These were ones that we had to start. And again, it's to try to provide information as rapidly as a starting point for you all to look at. And then finally, by law, the 2011 redistricting website has to be kept live for a certain period of time. It goes through September of 2021. So we've put it here as just background information. And if you click there, you can go and see the old website from 2011. And with that, I will stop sharing and answer any questions. I call this a soft launch because again, you need to work with it. You need to give us advice and guidance on how to refine it and how to make it better. And obviously, there are pieces that we'll still be adding as we go forward throughout the year. So I see two hands are up.
Co-Chair Maieda, then Commissioner Stetcher.
Where did you, what was your resource for the FAQs and the glossary terms?
Okay, so we did start with the 2011 glossary and and FAQ. Both Holly's law firm and we went through that and then we added some more from the state website. But again, it's just a starting point.
Commissioner.
But it's a starting point.
Commissioner Stetcher, then Commissioner Saito Sato.
Yeah, there are a lot of things that I could quibble with. But the most important thing I wanted to say is it's quite impressive to have this much work done this quickly. And and I think it covers critical ground and is pretty friendly. And so I just wanted to tip my hat to whoever did the work to get us this far this quickly.
So I will reinforce that it was a collaborative effort. There was an independent website design company that did the work. Obviously, we had to provide the content. But for something like this to be accomplished within the county system in about four and a half weeks is pretty remarkable, if you know how county time works. One thing I didn't show you is it also translates into many, many languages. If I can be indulged for one more second. And one of the things I thought was very nice is when I shared this with the I'll just pick a language here. When I shared this with the working group, Polo said he would go through and double check some of the language because like this is Bulgarian, we can do check. You know, I can go on through this list, Japanese, Laos, it opens up a lot of possibilities. Now, obviously, this is using Google to translate and there are limitations in it. We understand that with time, it's been getting stronger. But we also know, you know, it's a starting point. So I had appreciated Polo and some of the other Commissioner Morales indicating that they would look at the information to see how accurate it was. But that was one more feature I forgot to point out.
And I was going to, the one question I was going to raise was something about search optimization or something to make sure that if if someone just types in redistricting in LA County, this site comes up and you don't have to navigate through some
Right.
complicated pathway.
Yeah, in fact, prior to this going live, if you typed in redistricting at Los Angeles county, you would either go to the registrar recorder and you would see what was before or you would go to the 2011 old work old website. So we had to work with the county to get them to take down the 2011, give us that name and then link the 2011, which they then had to keep live for a period of 10 years. So yeah, now if you go on it, like I've been checking all weekend, the Google search, and this is popping up right at the top of the list.
Commissioner Holtzman?
All right, so Commissioner Stetcher and all might be pleased to know in the Brown Act are actually search, internet searchability requirements for agendas. So I think it sounds like we're we're going to meet them. I would also agree with Commissioner Stetcher that that's a very eye-pleasing, comprehensive sort of website. It's obviously it's well organized, et cetera, et cetera. Love to know who the company was that put that together.
And. Your name is RD if you want to know.
What do they call RD?
RD.
Like remote desktop?
I can get you their information if you need to know for the future.
Well, yeah, whatever, just so we, whatever. Anyway, I wonder how much they charge. Wonder how much they charged because you never know when I'm going to want one or organization. Anyway, I run. Anyway, so it looks really nice. The graphics are pretty like little walking things, but again, this is sort of follows on my one in the year changed in the logo or just taken out. The graphics don't have anything to do with mapping. They're all just saying, you know, people walking around and what have you. I think there should be some sort of maps in our graphics. That's the comment. And also and also, obviously, because you got the the criteria from the Secretary of State, you must have written in the state's criteria, not the criteria that apply to counties. So I'm sure that can be fixed pretty easily.
Actually, it was from their suggested website content for county governments.
Well, we have specific mandates. A lot of counties can do this with a different, not a mandate, they can also.
Give us the language then.
Yeah, so anyway, we got to ask Holly and she'll probably tell you what the actual criteria are for us. So there's that. And I wanted to say that again, because we're supposed to be independent and the 2011 redistricting wasn't independent, maybe you could just sever that link between our website and the 2011 site. Something to think about.
That's why we sort of put it under it just as a reference tool. You know, let me just mention because I I've been hearing this word independence and also this values group. It might be interesting to think about independence as a value. And that would be an important way to also begin to distinguish. So just a thought.
I mean, the legislature wanted us to be independent. They didn't say that we are independent. That's another thing. If we say we are independent, that might be stretching the truth. But the legislature did say that the selection process was designed to produce a commission that was independent of the influence of the supervisors. So anyway, that's my last, my last thing here I wanted to say is how can we submit edits? Get edits made or the or the or the the public, you know, because all these you know, text explainers, we may have suggestions for making them either better or more accurate or what have you. And I think the commission should have some sort of oversight over the text that's on our website.
I would suggest that I serve as the focal point for any suggested changes be sent to me. And I can coordinate with the co-chairs. You know, obviously, anything of accuracy, we want to update right away. Between Ty and our other staff, we have the capability to modify the content, the text in the website itself.
Okay, you don't have to go back to.
No. RD. We have the capability to do that.
Thank you.
Any any other comments? I want to also commend Gaila on the work that's been done, especially to to have it ready and up and all of the information that's there. I had a question. I know it's a it's a work in progress and a soft lunch. What what else is needed, I guess? Because right now, if you if you, because I I had the same question with Commissioner Stetcher. That right now, if you look up LA County Redistricting Commission, it'll jump to our our page. But what else is needed to move it from soft lunch to to what?
Yeah, so I sort of see this as momentum. I need you all to look at it. We need to start working with it and we'll be refining it. The hard launch, you know, obviously, as you get bylaws, we'll upload those. As you get the public access plan, we'll upload that. Probably the software information, I did get an update from the county. Probably the software information, I did get an update from the county that the contract for buying the software is just now being completed. So we probably won't have information about the software to upload, I would think, for another month or two. But that's okay, we can't start using it sooner than that. So it is going to be a work in progress that way. The high launch to me happens when you say, let's proceed with the public access plan, and we start importing these 4,000 emails of all these different organizations. And I did not want us to import 4,000 emails when it was still, you know, you were still getting your bylaws, we're still trying to figure out, you know, getting comfortable with the website and all of that. So I sort of tie those two activities closely together. And, you know, frankly, the working group on public outreach, we are planning to have the meeting on Tuesday, so I'm glad you're deferring the plan another week. But we will have to begin that launch, and that's when it will build up momentum. You all should know that with GovDelivery, it did go out to 1,200 emails for this meeting. You know, so we are going from 60 to over 1,000, because it is now part of a larger chain of people who have said, yes, we want to know anything about this word. Okay? And they also have links with other counties who then, as they learn about you, for example, San Diego or Santa Barbara, other counties may say, well, we also want to sign up. And they have sort of that cross fertilization across different jurisdictions.
We have a couple of hands up, Commissioner Stetcher, then Commissioner Saito, and Commissioner Haile Soto.
I just wanted to point out that there's a public comment, so we shouldn't go past this without checking, reading it into the record.
Commissioner Saito?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Gaila, what kind of resources might we have available specific to language access? I know Google has improved a lot, but we know it's not perfect. And so while we can step in as commissioners to provide some support and look at some of the language, I think it might make sense to invest some resources in checking through the various languages to see, to make sure that it is accessible and accurate language.
I think, to me, I just wanted to get something up. So the Google Translate was obviously a good first start. I think the language access issue, we really need to think through with the public access and for the, the public hearings going forward. The organizations that we are working with should be able to help us to understand what translators we need to have available for those meetings. And we can look at what kind of traffic we are getting in terms of different language requests going forward, and that should also help. You know, and we are committed to those 12 threshold languages for our public hearings and when requested. But, you know, I appreciate your concern, but I thought it was better to at least get the Google Translate up.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that makes sense. That makes sense to improve on that, I think, is where the work will go, thank you.
Commissioner Haile Soto, then Commissioner Holtzman?
I guess I'd also like to commend staff for bringing up the website, it looks pretty good, pretty impressive for such a short compressed amount of time to get all that information up. I manage a website as well, so I know the difficulty of keeping it up to date. Maybe one recommendation, and I could probably talk about it in the working group, is maybe highlighting, maybe having like a banner right at the top kind of showing the the next upcoming like public meeting, whether it's our commissioners' meeting, just very easy access. So as soon as it pops up, someone knows when the next meeting is, and then instead of them having to navigate through it. So they're fairly simple, it could be cross-linked. But I think it has a good structure, and it's evolving, just like anything else as we get more information. So, thank you.
Commissioner Holtzman?
Yeah, on the language access thing, just wanted to let you know that the San Diego County Commission is translating its agendas now into its required languages. I don't know if they're using Google Translate, if they're using, or if they're using a service, but if you'd like, I could find out.
So in terms of agendas or any of those documents, if we receive requests from the public for any of those to be translated, we would translate them into any of those 12 languages. So far, we've received none, no requests. On our agendas, it requests, I think it's 72 hours request for a regular meeting. When we get into the public hearings, the challenge is going to be they want 24 hours notice only. But that's again where the translation system, translation, you know, the translation of documents and PowerPoints and all that would be very critical. But so far, we've received no requests.
I know the city of LA used to have individual staff members who could translate into each language. I don't know if they, they still do, but that might be a source to look to.
So LA County, actually, they have a contract, but they indicate they would have challenge in 24 hours. I have found a service that would do it in 24 hours. And that's actually, the way the webinar would work is you'd have this kind of an arrangement, and there would be a special button. If you have asked ahead of time to have the meeting translated into Spanish, they would then call into that number, they would listen to it on their phone in Spanish with 80% volume, and they would see it on the screen with 20% in English. So we've worked out those logistics when we get into the public hearings and ask the translation of any of those documents.
Okay, more details.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
There are no other comments. Can we read the public comments for the record, please?
So we have one public comment for this item from Kiana Assamantbar from California Common Cause. "Thank you so much to the county staff who created this website. I wanted to share that ensuring that CRC materials are easily accessible is important. Labeling each document separately under the meeting, instead of including all supporting material in one large PDF, will help members of the public access and review important commission documents. Ensuring that language translations of the website are available is also very important. I would suggest consulting with community groups to make sure the translated website materials are accessible and clear to limited English proficient voters. Lastly, not everyone who signed up for notices has been receiving meeting notices through the listserv. And the notices have also arrived from various email addresses and names. Ensuring that the listserv notices are working correctly is critically important, so the public can fully rely on the email notifications to be notified about CRC meetings and activity." There are no other.
Sorry, I didn't quite get.
There are no other public comments on this item.
Thank you. So if there are no more comments, we'll move on to overview of public records.
And the overview of public records is going to be presentation by our counsel, Holly. I just want to mention that it will be my goal to try to end this meeting tonight at no later than 9:45. So hopefully, we can get that done and then take care of a few other items of business before we adjourn. Holly?
Yes, thank you. This should run about 10 or 15 minutes. And I have been struggling uncharacteristically with internet service, and I've been booted out of the meeting at least four times. Have not taken it personally and hope it does not happen during this. But this is just a brief overview of the Public Records Act to finish up our training on Brown Act, et cetera. Next slide, please. The Public Records Act is modeled on the Federal Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, which most people have heard of. It was signed by Governor Reagan in 1968. And it essentially, at its core, it requires that government make available for inspection and disclosure public records. Next slide, please. It's even the idea that the people have the right to access information concerning the conduct of the people's business is enshrined in the California Constitution. And that's extended through to the government code, where the legislature expressly stated, while it was mindful of individuals' right to privacy, it declared that access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business was a fundamental and necessary right of every person in the state. And so it is something that all branches of government at all levels, not all branches of government really, but certainly, the commission here is one that is covered by the Public Records Act. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to break down very quickly, what are the elements in the Public Records Act? It applies to any writing. And writing in the digital age includes emails, and it includes social media posts. And when I call out social media posts here, I am expressly talking about social media accounts that are maintained by the government. So if the commission established, I'm not at all suggesting it would happen, but as an example, if the commission established a Twitter account from which it tweeted, here's where the next meeting is, here's a website, you know, to visit, that would be considered a writing. So it's any writing, contains information related to the conduct of people's business. So it can actually stray, you know, a little bit beyond the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the body, but it still is something that relates to the people's business. So if there are, for example, emails maintained by the agency that really don't have anything to do with the people's business, somebody, you know, got an email from their spouse, you know, pick up milk on the way home, that's not going to be considered a public record. So it does need to be related to the conduct of the people's business. And it needs to be prepared, owned, used, or retained. So this includes even documents that are retained on personal devices. So there was a Supreme Court case a while back, California Supreme Court case that resolved the issue of whether emails that were maintained on a city council member's personal computer that were going to the personal email address, yet they were about city business, were those considered public records? Because the city.
Someone faces with Gaila tomorrow.
Who can, there we go. So it is, you know, it is that, in that instance, it was not prepared by the city. It wasn't owned by the city. The city didn't have that computer, that wasn't even the official city email address, but the court declared that because it was a city official and it involved city business, it was nevertheless a public record, even though it was maintained on a personal device. And I call this out here, because you will see later in the draft bylaws, we have a section that talks about emails and ensuring that your, any emails you may receive at your personal address, which you may receive about commission business, should be forwarded to your county, official county email address, so that the official email account has those more readily accessible. And it is one that is maintained by a state or local agency, like the commission, which I just talked about. And regardless of the physical form or characteristic, like I said, the core is what is the purpose of the record more than where is it? So, next slide, please. I just highlight this here, this can include, like I said, social media posts, if it is one, a social media account maintained by the government. It can also extend to an individual commissioner's social media account if it was one that they were using to conduct commission business on. So if someone started using their personal account, you would, you would, should be careful about posting official information using your personal account. What most people do, if they were going to go down that road, and I'm not suggesting you do, is they set up a separate account, they have a personal account that they use only for personal business, and then they will have an official social media account that they use for official business. But one thing is, if the commission does get a Public Records Act request that requests any information that may be on your cell phone, you, we will be contacting you, and it will require you to kind of go through and see if you have any responsive records on your cell phone and turn those over to us. Next slide, please. Just nuts and bolts, how it works. We, once we get a Public Records Act request, we've got 10 days to provide the records or make them available for inspection. At that time, we also need to notify the requister if any records are withheld based on an exemption. And depending on the volume of records or the length of time it takes to search the archives to obtain them, we do have the option of, within those 10 days, saying we need additional time, and we can have up to an additional 14 days to review and see if we have responsive records and if any exemptions may apply. So you can see the short timeframe, if we reach out to you, asking you to review any of your personal emails, we've got a short timeframe to work with, and we appreciate your cooperation on that. Next slide, please. There are many exemptions from the duty to disclose that can apply, including, and I've just listed a few of the most common exemptions. Preliminary drafts, notices, notes, or memoranda that are not retained in the ordinary course of business. And here's the balancing test that courts will look at, provided that the public interest in withholding those records clearly outweighs the public interest in disclosure. As you can imagine, there's a host of case law around what that means. It is very contextual. And so whether that, whether something is a preliminary draft or not is something that, you know, I would work with staff to identify when we go through the responsive documents to see if it's one that is exempt from disclosure. Pending litigation is a common one. Personnel, medical, or similar files. So for example, if one of you sent an email to the co-chairs saying, I'm going to miss this meeting for some health reasons or personal health reasons, that kind of detail would not be subject to disclosure. Documents of agency contractors that are not by contract owned by the agency, that's likely not going to happen here. Your home addresses and phone numbers are not subject to disclosure. Those documents protected by attorney-client privilege or attorney work product are exempt. And then there is a general balancing exception that again is very fact-specific. And one, essentially, what we do is we gather all responsive documents, and then my office will go through and identify what exemptions may or may not apply. And that, next slide, is, it was a brief presentation, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can also see if there's any public comment and go from there.
Commissioner Stetcher, you have your hand up?
Yes, Holly, just a general question, you've worked with commissions like this in the past. What should we, as individual commissioners, be alert to? And, and, you know, to avoid any complications and, you know, in the course of what we're likely to be doing, where is this most likely to come up?
When you, one thing I would strongly recommend is keep in mind that when you write an email, it may be subject to public disclosure. And this is where a lot of embarrassing things come out, where people fought, you know, rats, I did not think this was going to come out. You know, there was an example of someone down, I can't remember if it was in Orange County or San Diego, and the issue was, where does the city council order dinner for their closed session? And somebody wrote an email that was very critical and kind of embarrassing about one of the restaurants in town about not to order from. You know, it involved some, you know, ethnic issues. And, you know, she was horrified it was going to come out, and believe it or not, it, you know. you know, ethnic issues and, you know, she was horrified it was going to come out and believe it or not, it, you know, that kind of thing can come out, so just to use that as an embarrassing example, just be cautious of that type of thing. Commissioner Maeda, yes?
Yes, so our CRC email accounts are part of the public records, right?
Well, what it, it, your account is your official account. Now, whether any one particular email in there is a public record is contextual. I'm going to say that almost all of them will be considered public records. They may be subject to some exemptions and exceptions, but they are going to be public records, but it could, I'll, go ahead.
So can I follow up on that? So we're, the bylaws are, require us to try to use our, our CRC accounts for official commission business. Forget personal things to our personal emails that deal with redistricting, we're supposed to forward them to our, our CRC accounts and so forth. So I, that's my assumption is that the CRC accounts are, are considered potentially public records that might have to be disclosed. But in terms of our managing our own CRC account, outlook accounts, are we not supposed to be clicking delete for things that we've read and, you know, they're no longer relevant? Can we manage our own email accounts in that fashion?
I will check with the county and see what their automatic retention is on that. So I mean, there's some things that are fleeting that you wouldn't retain. And there's others that, you know, I think when you get comments from the public, that those things you probably should not be deleting. And I would recommend you use a folder structure, you know, if you want to, if you're a inbox to zero kind of person, you just have a folder where those go. But I can also check with the county and see what their default document retention programming in the email is. And I can, I'll just, I'll find that out and share it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holtzman, you have your hand up?
Ah, yes. So I, I think what you're saying, Holly, is that if we've sent everything to our CRC account, you won't need to look into our personal accounts. They'll just, just get a statement from us and say, there's everything that I got and it has to do with the commission is over there. So it won't be looking for stuff on my home computer.
That's generally it, yeah. What, what we will typically do, because we can't, we don't have, the commission doesn't have access to your computer. What we typically do is we will give you a, a statement that will require you to sign and represent that you have gone through and you've given us everything. If it's already been forwarded to your commission email, then you're done. But it will, we do, you know, the, that's how we can protect the commission itself from a claim that we didn't turn everything over is we then do require you to sign that if you have stuff on your personal devices.
Any other comments or questions? Great. Oh, yes, Commissioner Haile Soto.
Yes, just maybe, Holly, I guess when you talk to the county. Typically, when we log in, I don't, don't recall if, with the county virtual machines, if they'll just pop up message saying, or what are the county's retention schedule is for emails. And then I typically on my day job, usually I process public records requests, so we do it from the server side. So even if someone deletes emails from, from the county email, typically IT is able to search it through, through the servers themselves, so. But I guess we could just get clarification from, from the county IT and.
Exactly, that's exactly right. You know, we'll do that and that's, that's how most public agencies do it, they do it from the server side, so. And under their own retention schedule, they keep a certain emails for a certain period, no matter if you hit delete or not. I don't know if, if we have any public comment on this?
Yes, one has been asked that next, any public comment?
There are no public comments on this item.
Great. Just a reminder that we're also required to, to complete an online ethics training and, and then supply the certificate suitable for framing at the end of that process. So if you haven't done it, please do. The next item is 6E, the discussion and adoption of potential bylaws. But as I announced at the beginning of this meeting, we will not be formally considering a motion to adopt the bylaws. But we do want to look at, at them. And in particular, so as I said, we, sort of a working group informally got together and hammered out a lot of the language. But there's a couple points, a couple of provisions I want to focus you on. And spend just a very brief amount of time discussing them if there is discussion, but a couple of those points. Section 4.07B, dealing with vacancies in, if there's a vacancy of, of a commissioner, that we are then allowed to fill that vacancy if we choose to do so. And if we do, we will endeavor to do so in a manner that would result in the newly constituting, not newly constituted commission with the new commissioner or commissioners added. If that commission as a whole meets the criteria under which we were originally established under section, Elections Code, Section 21532. In other words, we're not going to be required strictly to meet every single, we're not going to try to replicate necessarily the commissioner who's commissioner or commissioners who vacated. But as a whole, trying to meet the standards under which we were originally constitute. And if possible, we would select the replacement if we're going to do so at all from the pool of remaining qualified candidates from the initial pool, initial applicant pool. And it, and I think that pretty well characterizes the discussion at the last meeting, but I wanted to focus you on that. Another one is Section 408A, email communications. I kind of mentioned this, that we've, this one encourages or actually requires you to use your official commissioner email address for commission business, but if you, or you're encouraged to do, encouraged to, well, you're supposed to use your official email address. If you use your personal one, you have to at least CC your CRC email address. You're going to encourage the public to use your official CRC email address. If you nevertheless get personal emails to your personal one, then you forward those to your CRC address. So in other words, everything that deals with the commission, commission business, there's a record of it in your CRC email accounts. And then 408C, this is the provision that has made the most significant change from the last time you saw these bylaws. And thanks to Commissioner Holtzman for drafting a version of this, which we then refined in our subgroup. But basically just highlighting a couple of things. First, under C1, this provision prohibits any intentional communication with a member of the Board of Supervisors, an agent for the member, for a member of the board, such as, I guess their lawyer, accountant, personal representative of some type, or any of the board members' immediate family regarding redistricting. So it's a very broad prohibition, any communications with the board basically involving redistricting other than time, place, and agenda of an upcoming commission meeting or hearing is prohibited. If you unintentionally have a communication, and this might happen because you're talking to somebody and then that person says, oh, by the way, that's my dad, or whatever, then, then in that situation, I guess it wouldn't be their dad, but that's my mother. In that situation, you would have to then summarize and report the communication that arises unintentionally. And you would do that to the clerk of the commission, and I'll discuss clerk in a, in a second. Second, prohibition regarding all other parties. This goes beyond what the statute requires, but we thought this was an important statement we would make that we were going to also prohibit any intentional communication with a member of the public organization or interest group regarding adjusting district lines. So when it comes to line drawing discussions, we're not going to, we are prohibited from intentionally communicating with a member of the public on that. If that somehow slips out unintentionally, someone raises it with you, then you're going to, you know, presumably tell people to stop, you're, you know, you're not supposed to be discussing that. But if there is any discussion, you summarize it and again, report it to the clerk. Three, except during a public meeting or hearing, a commissioner is not supposed to directly communicate with anyone other than another commissioner, staff, legal counsel, consultants retained by the commission or experts to learn about general redistricting principles. Anybody other than that in the general public, then if you have any communication, then you're supposed to forward that to the clerk. And if it's a unrecorded verbal communication, then you summarize it and again, submit that to the clerk. So there, we may want to have some discussion about what all that means. But basically, we're holding ourselves to a pretty strict standard of avoiding communication outside of public meetings and hearings to the extent we can, or we at least make a record of all of those kinds of communications. The clerk is supposed to keep a log of all of these kinds of communications and post them. And then if we can go to Article 5, Section 5.02E, the officers, or I'm sorry, the, the co-chairs are, these are the duties. So we're going to preside over meetings, et cetera. But one of the duties is to serve as the clerk unless the commission has hired or designated someone else to fill that role. So as much as a co-chair, Williams and I would love to be the clerk, we think it's, we, we don't really have the capacity to do that. And so we would like to, you know, designate someone to fill that role. And we should have a discussion about who that person might be. But certainly, a staff person would be a person that we would, would probably be looking to, to be that clerk and to fulfill those functions. So those are the main changes that I think are important enough to highlight for you and for the public. And so, you know, open up just for a very brief, if there's any discussion on those, or if you have any other general questions about the bylaws as they've been drafted. So Ty, can you, because I can't see everybody, can you go ahead and, and call on folks?
Sure. So first it'll be Commissioner Orpinala Segura, then Commissioner Greeno Wong.
I have a question, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or once we're getting close to reviewing the final copy of the bylaws. It's regarding communications and speaking to members of the public. So I'll pose my question, if it's not appropriate at this time, please let me know. So you know, I, I understand we're prohibited from speaking about adjusting district lines specifically. But what about just redistricting as a process in, in general? I have a, a lot of different group of, of colleagues who are very involved in community. They supported me during our oath, when we took our oath. So here and there, they'll ask me how it's going. So I just want to make sure that I'm not, I wouldn't be violating any bylaw by talking about the, how it's going. I hope that makes sense.
May, may I take the crock pot?
Sure, Commissioner Holtzman, go ahead.
This was drafted with the purpose of allowing that sort of communication in mind. So as long as you're not talking about a specific part of redistricting that might come before the commission, you wouldn't have to do any reporting at all. And if they, you know, they're talking about some decision that you think might become before the decision, I don't know what, what before the commission, I don't know what that would be, but, you know. Then you'd have to, you know, report it. And, but, but that's it. But in general, I think we should be free, and I think this allows you to be free to discuss redistricting principles. You know, what the statute says, things like that, how other places do it with your friends and colleagues, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wong?
Oh, yeah, I, that was, I had a similar concern about, I, I didn't realize that this was supposed to be narrowing what we were allowed to talk about. I think because a prior version said something about communicating about something that is substantially related to redistricting. So would, would, would that kind of language be broader than this specific adjusting district lines?
I, I, I don't know, I, I think that if you had that kind of language in there, it would catch more things and you'd have to report more things.
Okay. Then my other concern was, I guess, so, so if we wanted to consult, let's say, another commission to, or do some trainings and learn about redistricting and talk to other commissioners, somebody from the state commission or somebody from another local commission to understand their process and how they drew, you know, what they consider, that's all okay.
Yeah. And I think Holly is suggesting, you know, adding, you can go to workshop and learn about general principles.
Just to clarify, I did say I suggest adding workshops, but I meant workshops conducted by the commission. So except during a public meeting, comma, workshop or hearing, you know.
Okay, so as an example, I'm planning on, on tuning into the San Diego meeting tomorrow. And they're having Kathy Fung from Common Cause and their independent counsel give a lesson on redistricting 101 principles. First of all, if I don't say anything, that there'd be nothing for me to report, but I could certainly learn from that. And, you know, if I ask a question about a general principle or a rule that we don't, it's not going to be something we decide on, I'm going to ask them what the law is for, for something like that. I don't think I'd have to report it either. So that, that, that's how, that's one way to look at it. I mean, so, you know, you can tune in to all these forums that are on the internet on redistricting and learn without having to report that.
Then might I suggest then you, you, we should be specific about adjusting district lines for LA County.
Oh. Okay.
That's a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
Who, who was next, Ty?
So Commissioner Sider Soto, then Commissioner Stetcher.
I, I need additional clarification based on past conversation. Because I, I'm thinking, you know, if there is an instance where an organization approaches me outside of a public meeting or outside of our ad hoc work groups, is that according to these bylaws, that's fine, but is that a sort of within, thinking of, you know, Public Records Act, I'm thinking about Brown Act, like, I think I need additional clarifications so that I'm comfortable.
Right, so that kind of situation would not be a Brown Act violation. Because no one's making a decision, you're just taking input from the community, plus there's less than a quorum, there's not a decision being made. It's not really, an oral conversation like that is not going to really amount to a public record. Except to the extent that if you, after you had the conversation, if it fell within the sub-paragraph three, then you just report it. So I think there's a distinction here between those conversations, which the commission is, wants to agree should be prohibited. And that's the first two versus the third type of conversation, which is permitted, but requires disclosure.
Commissioner Stetcher?
So the example that I think is likely to happen is we're at a, a meeting of some group and people and a person says, what did you decide at the last meeting? Have you adopted the bylaws yet? What happened with respect to the conflict of interest thing? And you, you want to say something in response. I think what this three says is it's fine to give those, that information about what transpired, but we have to report the communication then back formally somehow. Or does that not a required report?
So Commissioner Stetcher, I think it would require reporting if you're talking about something. If, yes, if they ask you that the bylaws, now if the bylaws been adopted, what do they say? And you say they haven't been adopted and we're going to adopt them, and this is what they're going to say. And you get feedback from them and they say, oh, that's awful. Then you'd have to report it, but that's, you're just telling them something that's happened in the past. No, I don't think there's any reason. We're saying this is stuff that might be, might come before the commission. That's, that's in the future, not, not in the past. So go ahead and tell everybody what's been going on.
So in other words, it relates to something that might affect the decisions of the commission. That might still happen.
Yeah.
And if they say in a response, oh, you know, Robert's Rules of Orders are really, really better, you ought to reconsider that. Then it's reportable?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I doubt it. I don't know. I don't know.
I, I can't, Ty, I can't see if there's anybody else, but there is a public comment that we, we should take.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are, are we ready for public comments?
I believe so.
So we have one public comment from Julia A. Gomez of ACLU SoCal. Julia, I will make you a panelist and please share your mic. And if you're comfortable, share your video. You will have two minutes and Gila will take time with that.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm not sure if you, okay, good evening, Commissioners. First, I just want to say I really appreciate all the updates to the bylaws that reflect a lot of the recommendations that their working group made. I wanted to provide comment about two sections regarding Section six dot oh one. We really urge the commissioners to provide seven to fourteen days notice and commit yourself to do that, at least at this point in the process. If it doesn't make it into the bylaws, then maybe through a motion of some sort, committing yourself at least for the next few months, when there's still, you know, two weeks apart in meetings, when you still can be providing that notice, really committing yourself as opposed to more loose language that's currently in the bylaws. It says that you will attempt to provide agendas and notice of meeting more than seventy-two hours ahead. Regarding Section four point zero eight C two, I think the language of that looks good. But at the same time, we really want you all to be able to feel comfortable reaching out to organizations about things such as accessibility, outreach and things of that sort. So in the comment section, I provided the language, and I think you could add at the end to make it even more clear that these types of communications that aren't about where line should be drawn should be allowed. So I'll quickly read it, but again, it's, it's written in, in the Q and A. Nothing in this subsection shall be construed as prohibiting a commissioner from communicating outside of a public meeting with a member of the public, an organization, or an interest group regarding best practices, accessibility, education, and outreach. And again, this is really to sort of mirror the practice of the statewide commission and allow you all to feel free to communicate with grassroots organizations about public outreach. Feel free to talk to someone like Advancing Justice Los Angeles about language accessibility without feeling the need to report those types of conversations that aren't about where a particular line should be drawn. The latter is really what we think should be done in a public meeting or through written comment and reported. Thank you.
We have another, we have another. Yeah, we have another public comment from Kiana Asamitbar from Common Cause. So Kiana, I will make you a panelist. Please share your mic. And if you're comfortable, your video, you will have two minutes to make your public comment.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the robust discussion and thinking around the CRC bylaws. I really think this is an important conversation that really sets the stage for the commission's work. I also appreciate the movement towards following the state model of limiting conversations about line drawing outside of a public hearing. I think that's a really important move. But to Julia's comments and some of the questions from the commissioners, commissioners, I do think clarity on the prohibition would be helpful to ensure that commissioners' efforts to engage the communities in their work and any sort of outreach or education that commissioners engage in, making sure that work is permitted and actually encouraged. And I think the language that Julia proposed is something that we support as well. Secondly, as it relates to meeting notices, we do urge the commission to strive for seven to fourteen days notice and posting of materials just to give communities enough time to be able to plan to attend the meetings, to review all the supplemental documents that are posted and to prepare their public comment ahead of time. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
We have no more public comment on this item.
Okay, I think that, that suggested language for four point oh eight C two is definitely something we should consider. I think that would really actually help alleviate some concerns. We, we want us to be able to go out and promote the process and not be accused of doing something about line drawing and then being prohibited. So I, I certainly would recommend that. But any other comments on the public comments, Commissioner Holtzman?
I, I too think that could be helpful. So Commissioner Coach Amayda, I was wondering if we could have the bylaws working group just get together in the next couple of days or at least before next Wednesday or maybe even Monday, just whatever. Just so I'm wondering if we can get together in time to just clean up this draft, propose a final draft, have it posted, and have the, the public have at least seven days to look at that, if not at the whole agenda for the next meeting.
We could, we can certainly try for that, whether or not, or not it needs to be a Zoom meeting or just exchange of emails. But we'll, we'll put, put together something. I'll commit to that. Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Sider Soto has your hand up.
Yes.
This is a question, I'll be brief. In, in connection to the suggestion of seven to, seven to fourteen days for making information available to the public, what, what might be we need to do, Gila, is that feasible? You know, what do you need from the commission to get anywhere close to that? I know previously we were meeting every week, so that was a challenge. Now it's every second, fourth, Wednesday of the month.
We're happy to, I mean, right now that we have a regular schedule, that it's always the second and the fourth Wednesday at seven PM, that should give plenty of notice to the public about when you meet. In terms of the agenda, we've been setting up meetings either usually Monday after this meeting with the co-chairs. We're going to be meeting this Friday because of President's Day to get the agenda ready. We have waited until we have the supporting materials ready to post the agenda, but it's up to the co-chairs. We're happy to post the agenda on the website as soon as it's ready. And then give people time to prepare the bylaws and add it at a later date. We should be able to easily, I mean, this time we posted, I believe, a week ahead.
I, I do think what, one of the issues is, you know, obviously, if you say you're going to do it, you, you have to do it, right? And, and I think what might end up happening is we might be agreeing on agendas somewhat prematurely and only to have them change in the days leading up to the meeting, which, you know, maybe, maybe that's better than nothing, but it might frustrate some folks who go on there thinking they're going to see a certain thing and then things are different. And that's, I think it's almost inevitable, but we do have two weeks between, so it is, it is conceivable at least to strive for seven days. Fourteen is, of course, out of the question. That'd be tonight, we post agenda for next time. That's not going to happen. But, you know, if you all feel strongly, we should try, we should commit ourselves to seven, can do that. Any other questions or comments at this point? Good. So please do take a look at these, or if you want to wait a few more days for the final consensus draft, you can do that, and we will endeavor to get that to you as soon as we can. And out to the public as well. What is next? This is on the last of my action items, but what would be next after this?
Future agenda items?
Future agenda items. Is that, was that my co-chair Williams?
So just asking if there are any, any items that commissioners would like to request me on the next agenda? Of future agendas?
Commissioner Morales, you have your hand up?
I wanted to just revisit the idea since we have a lot of great grassroots organizations that are really holding us accountable and making sure that we're well informed. With all the letters that have been submitted, that maybe it's an opportunity that we need to take to get to know who these folks are. And so in that spirit, to be able to have, you know, the five-minute presentation from organizations who may be leading some of these coalition efforts, to be able to get a sense of, you know, get to know them a little bit better in, in terms of what they're trying to accomplish from a community perspective.
Okay. Take that under consideration. Any others? Okay, if not, I'll hand it, it says executive director's report, but it's about that time.
I was going to say, in the interest of time, I have no other report, and I will return the floor to the co-chairs.
Okay, and Dan?
I will move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to say happy Valentine's Day to, to everyone coming up soon.
And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. Today.
Thank you.
Or tomorrow, actually.
Thanks, everybody. I think we got a lot done today.
Yeah.
Thank you.